Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, June 3, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for June 3, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there's any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Thank you. Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Roussel.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move on, I will defer to City Manager Van Milligan.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to start the council meeting off with an update on the storm that came through this afternoon. From the numbers we have right now, from Tom Berger, Dubuque County Disaster Services, the reports are between 2 and 1/2 and 3 and 1/4 inches of rain in about 1 hour, which anybody who was looking out the window could see the intensity of that. In 911 dispatch, there was between 190 and 200 calls. Now, this includes calls both within the city and across the entire county, and the entire county was affected. The Parks Department reports that we had about 12 trees affected, some private, some public trees, and there was a street closure because of trees down. And then some just general updates. Our city staff is still out clearing trees from the streets, and Public Works is clearing other debris from the red, from roadways. Detention basin levels are going down as staff pump them down. And I will tell you that yesterday, Public Works had crews come in to pump down our detention bases so they could have maximum capacity to handle stormwater. So the system itself was as prepared as it could be for the storm. The river is at 14, almost 14 and 1/2 right now. None of the, any flooding that anybody experienced had nothing to do with the Mississippi River at that stage. But the one fortunate thing for us was above 14 feet, we closed the floodgates. And the reason that's fortunate is because if the gates had been open and the river at 14 and 1/2 feet, the stormwater pipes would have had a difficult time draining into the river because of the back pressure of the river. But since we had all the gates closed and it pumped our basins down, all our detention basins were totally prepared to handle as much water as they had the capacity for. Fire staff responded to multiple electrical incidents and several resident assists. Police and fire closed multiple roadways and did traffic control. Public Works was placing road close signs at multiple locations. Multiple vehicles were inoperable in flooded roadways. The traffic signals at the Northwest arterial and Highway 20 were down, and police were directing traffic. But Public Works was able to repair the lights, and they're now operational. There were multiple reports of flooded basements, but no request for fire departments to pump out basements, at least yet. There may still be those requests, but usually what that means is there's water in people's basements, but it's not at such a severe level that they need fire department assistance. The one thing we have to remember about the B Branch Creek Stormwater Mitigation Project is it's a two, over $240 million project. And while the mayor and council has been prioritizing that project and investing heavily in it, well over 50% of the project is complete, it's not all complete. And there's still some key components to complete. For instance, the 16th Street Detention Basin, we're replacing that entire pumping system there and really upgrading the capacity of those pumps. And matter of fact, just got two federal grants, and so construction will start on that project soon. And then we also have two major stormwater pipe projects. You'll remember on 22nd Street, we put in the very, very large stormwater pipes from the B Branch Detention Basin, west, all the way west on 22nd, west of Central. But eventually, it's going to go all the way up to Kane Street, and so we're still, that's still in the funding process. And then the other major stormwater pipe, which is on 17th Street, now goes from the river to west of Central. But eventually, it will go all the way up to Rosedale, up by Senior High School, and that's still going through the funding process. So those three major components are not complete yet, but you're very aware of the major components that are complete. And that includes the first major one, which is, it's hard for people to envision it being part of the B Branch, but it's the massive stormwater detention basin that's up off of Carter Road. Now, it's off in the back. You can't see it, so people don't notice it, but there's a massive stormwater detention basin that we built up there. And then, of course, the daylighting of the B Branch Creek itself, where we took out the underground pipe and created the significant amount of storage capacity by daylighting the creek through the north end. And then we have, as I mentioned, we've put those two very large stormwater pipes in on 22nd and 17th. And we're, we have our, in the last five years, did a critical component, which was putting the six stormwater pipes under the railroad tracks so that the railroad tracks in the north end used to act as a dam, holding all the water in the north end and flooding people's basements and their cars and the streets. And that no longer exists because of these massive pipes that we put in, and now the water can get to the 16th Street Detention Basin. But as I mentioned, there's still components to complete of the project. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer for anybody?
Well, thank you very much, Mike. Since it isn't an item on the agenda, maybe we'll just go with your update and go for there for now, but I appreciate the fact that you are giving us an update on something that happened immediately right before the meeting here tonight. Okay, Adrianne, turn it back over to you.
Next, we'll move on to presentations. We have the 2024 Employee Spirit Awards Recognition.
Good evening. Cory Burbak, Assistant City Manager. You might notice there's not a lot of folks here, but for those of you who are at the employee luncheon, you remember that a lot of the award winners this year were Public Works, Water, and Fire, who might be busy tonight. But I do want to recognize our library staff, if you want to come on up and join us, because they were one of the Spirit winners. I, we're going to play a video in just a second because I think it does better justice than I can do by retelling the story, but one of the things that I get the pleasure of doing is working with our Spirit Awards Committee to review the nominations that come in from coworkers throughout the year that recognize great things happening by our staff throughout the community that maybe don't get seen on a regular basis. And so this year, we had a record-breaking 94 nominations by coworkers throughout the year, which makes it really hard to award only one in each category for service, people, integrity, responsibility, innovation, and teamwork. And then we recognize one or two, we don't, we're, the rules are tricky on this one, two, in most instances, Circle of Excellence Award winners, who are the individuals or teams of city employees that best exemplify the entire Spirit Statement. So this year, we have represented from the library. Come on up, Mike, Nick, you too. Yeah. So I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize our library team in the makerspace who won our Innovation Award this year. So thank you for being here tonight, and then you can help me introduce this video that our awesome PIO team put together.
The most important ingredient for a winning team, the players. For the city of Dubuque, that is the tremendously talented and committed city employees. They leave it all on the field every day, doing everything they can do to provide people in Dubuque the best customer experience, the best value for their investment, and the best chance for residents and businesses to fulfill their hopes and dreams. The first week of May is nationally recognized as Public Service Recognition Week. This year, to gather as many staff in one room at one time to celebrate your successes and focus on employee development and well-being. Let's spend some time talking about well-being.
What does it look like when you're bringing your best self? And then what does it look like when we're bringing our stressed selves? And if we can at least bring some awareness and compassion to, woo, I just kicked off my cortisol, then you can help yourself kind of get re-regulated. You're going to need to pull yourself as the conductor off the tracks from time to time to recharge. The goal is to get us all back into green energy, which is where we can make positive change, where we can have productive discussions, and each of us has to do our part to get us there.
Service, people, integrity, respect, innovation, and teamwork. We in this room show up every day to achieve the mission and the vision that our city council sets for us, and the way we do it is through that Spirit Statement. I am so grateful for you. I'm very grateful for Barb's message because I think we all show up for each other, good, bad, and ugly sometimes, and knowing that helps when we show up in those moments that are maybe not our best self, they're our stressed self.
It takes a team mentality to serve our community. Thank you for your commitment to serving the residents of Dubuque and to supporting your fellow teammates, and I'm lucky to get to serve with you.
I want to thank mayor and city council, all of you, either for being there physically or for those of you that couldn't be. We feel the support that you give us every day of the year in our job, so thank you for that. Please help me in recognizing the library team for their Innovation Award, and then if you see the other staff out on the street, please thank them as well.
Well, thank you all very much. And Cory, specifically, thank you to you and the team that puts this together every single year. It's really important to celebrate, all of us together, but in all the work that you and all the staff do every single year, it's incredibly important for the rest of the city of Dubuque, and we really, really appreciate the fact that we do get a chance to stop and celebrate, and thank you very much for the work that you do and doing it so well to be recognized in this way. I'm really excited that we have this opportunity to recognize you tonight and recognize you on the annual appreciation day, so thank you for being here.
We'll move on to proclamations. We have the Upper Mississippi River Wildlife and Fish Refuge Day.
Right, and Kurt Strand is here to accept this proclamation this evening.
Just a quick update on this amazing event. Its 100th anniversary is on Friday, and it started by a gentleman named Will Dilg. He is the founder and first president of the Isaac Walton League, partnering with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and other institutions and people that were passionate about this amazing 240,000-acre property that we sit in the middle of and that the River Museum and Aquarium is the interpretive center for this mass of water, fish, wildlife, animals, et cetera. It's a combination of conservation and recreation, and we are very pleased that the city has, is given a proclamation for this important part, not just for conservation and recreation, but it really does represent our beautiful area and the work-life balance that we all achieve or want to achieve in this area. One little tidbit that I really enjoy is it's the only refuge in the United States with the word "fish" in it. And on Friday, representatives of Isaac Walton and of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife will be on campus at the River Museum. Couple talks are going to happen, and they're going to be mingling, et cetera. And so just wanted to thank you for the attention of this very important piece of our area. Thanks.
Thank you very much for being here, Kurt. And thanks for that piece of trivia. I did not know that. That's really very interesting. And obviously, thank you to you and everybody at the River Museum, the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, for all the work that you're doing on a regular basis to promote our river and really what makes us us here in Dubuque and in this part of the country. So thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the residents of the city of Dubuque and the greater Dubuque region recognize the 100th anniversary of the establishment of the Upper Mississippi River Wildlife and Fish Refuge, and whereas the refuge was created by an act of Congress 100 years ago on June 7, 1924, to systematically evaluate, manage, and protect the 261-mile, 240,000-acre river corridor from Wabashaw, Minnesota to Princeton, Iowa, including 72 cities and towns. And whereas the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service nonprofit partners and others work to conserve, protect, and enhance habitat and plant life for use as a breeding ground for migratory birds, fish, and other wildlife, including 42 freshwater mussel species and 840 plants and as well as 300 nesting pairs of America's symbol, the bald eagle. And whereas the refuge offers recreational opportunities to the public, including hunting, fishing, hiking, biking, boating, kayaking, canoeing, wildlife viewing, and photography, as well as environmental, historical, and cultural education, and welcomes 3.7 million visitors annually. And whereas the city of Dubuque encourages residents and the people of Iowa to gather locally throughout the year for events to celebrate the 100th anniversary. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, mayor of the city of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 7th of June 2024 as Upper Mississippi River Wildlife and Fish Refuge Day.
See you on Friday.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there's any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there's any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 4 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrianne. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually, Cory?
No.
No, thank you.
No input.
Nothing from the city clerk's office. Back to the table, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Next, our items set for public hearing. We have three. First is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Millwork Flats LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement for June 17, 2024. Second is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed First Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and South Point LLC, and providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue obligations pursuant to the development agreement for June 17, 2024. And third is Cypress Road Water Main Lowering Project, initiate public bidding process and setting date for public hearing for June 17, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Roussel.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for June 17.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Roussel and a second by Sprank. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there's any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there's any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is First Amendment to Grant Agreement with Forward Investments Group LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion by Sprank and a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution approving a First Amendment to the Grant Agreement with Forward Investments Group LLC for the rehabilitation of 1047 Bluff Street, which will create three new residential rental units, two of which are eligible for the housing creation incentive. The project continues to advance as planned. Since this grant agreement was executed on August 21, 2023, city council has given additional support to the creation of housing in the greater downtown urban renewal area. Multi-family housing creation projects are now eligible for either 10 years of tax abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing. The proposed First Amendment to the Grant Agreement includes 15 years of tax increment financing for the project. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution approving the First Amendment to the Grant Agreement with Forward Investments Group LLC for the rehabilitation of 1047 Bluff Street. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Cory.
No input.
Thank you, Adrianne. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Pass at 7-0.
Public hearing number two is resolution approving a subordination agreement for Downtown Rehabilitation Loan Program Loan Number 2-23, 1199 Central Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a subordination agreement with Virtual Velocity LLC, the developer, Dubuque Initiatives, Michael and Denise Urshin, and the city of Dubuque for interest in property located at 1199 Central Avenue. The city loan was subordinate to only one other lender, but two more lenders have been brought into the project, so the city loan will now be subordinate to a total of three lenders. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving a subordination agreement with Virtual Velocity LLC, the developer, Dubuque Initiatives, Michael and Denise Urshin, and the city of Dubuque, Iowa for the interest of, for interest in property located at 1199 Central Avenue. Do we have anyone in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Cory.
No input.
Thank you, Adrianne. Back to the table then for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, and I was just, as a point of information, I was just hoping that Mr. Van Milligan would talk about subordination agreements and what is that, and what is the practical effect of what we're going to be voting on tonight, please?
Sure. So when you are participating in a loan on a project, there's multiple lenders in most projects, and one, only one lender can be in first place on the loan. And that's usually the main lending institution, which is the case here. And so our loan was subordinate to that lender. So the way that works, if the project were to fail, and let's say, and had to be sold, the lender in first place gets paid first, and the lender in second place gets paid second. And so you hope there's enough money from the sale to pay both lenders. In this case, two more lenders have been brought in on the project, but they would only agree to be in on the project if the city loan was subordinate to their loan so that they were ahead of the city on repayment. So the total debt is $1,846,000. They had an independent appraisal done on the building, and it says that upon completion, which it basically is, it would have a value of $2 million. So in that case, all the lenders would be fully paid back if the project were to fail and had to be resold. But it actually goes up to $3 million of value as they get fully rented up, and so they're starting the rental up process now. So while there's a certain period of risk, here it's very short, and I think it's a very minor risk, but this is very common, that the public dollars are the last one on the list of lenders. I mean, matter of fact, I can't think of a situation where it's not been like that, but it certainly is here in this case.
So thank you very much. So this, this means that while it's a practical situation because of the banks, and then, but this also reflects your confidence in this project.
Absolutely. I've, we've had tours of the project. It's fabulous. And the experience that we're seeing with downtown market rate rentals right now is they rent up very quickly. So for instance, the city was a partner on the Kretschmer Building in the historic Millwork District. That project opened in October of, let me think here a minute, I think it was 2022. By May of 2023, it was 100% rented, I think it was 48 units, and had a waiting list. And so right now, as we know, we have a housing study that says we're 1,100 housing units short by 2030. We're, we're short plenty right now. And where people would love to live from the market rate rental perspective is proving to be in our downtown, in our historic Millwork District based on the demand for those apartments. So yeah, I have a high level of confidence in this developer, in this project, and I, well, I say, there is some risk. There's no doubt about that. I think it's, I think it's minimal.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Pass at 7-0.
Public hearing number three is public hearing for the 2024 pavement marking project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Roussel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Roussel and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Apologize, you're going to have to give me a minute for my computer to catch up here.
That is okay.
I got it. Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyes is recommending city council approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $247,500 for the 2024 pavement marking project. As part of the 2024 pavement marking project, the city is including an alternate bid, the installation of pavement markings for a downtown bike lane pilot project. Contemplated bike lane pilot project will involve the establishment of a westbound bike lane route on 10th Street along with an eastbound bike lane route on 9th Street. Both streets would utilize a combination of shared bike lanes, bicyclists ride in mixed traffic, and conventional painted bike lanes, bicyclists ride in a dedicated exclusive space. The routes for the bike lane pilot project were determined based upon citizen input from a significant community engagement campaign. The proposed bike lane pilot project has been shared with citizens and property owners along the corridor that would be impacted with lane reconfiguration and parking removal. Based on the alternate bid prices received for the bike lane pilot project, the city will then determine if there is sufficient funding in the pavement marking capital improvement budget to incorporate the bike lane pavement markings as part of the 2024 pavement marking project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimated cost of $247,500 for the 2024 pavement marking project through the adoption of the attached resolution. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none, do we have anyone virtually?
We do not.
Thank you very much.
Steve Cook did submit written input for this item, and that has been included with the agenda item.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Back to the table then for any discussion.
Now, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Um, I thank the city manager for his memo. Uh, you didn't exactly discuss a possible timeframe of how long that would go for, the pilot program if, if approved? Is it a year or two?
I'm gonna let Justine Hall, the city traffic engineer, respond to your questions.
Hi, good evening. Justine Hall's, um, traffic engineer. The timeline, so with it being a pilot, um, with everything, it would be painted probably July timeframe, a little bit after 4th of July, don't wanna deal with that rigmarole, but, um, it would, it's painted on the, it would be painted on the road, so it would be going through winter and the wear and tear of everything, and the determination of how successful that this pilot would be if it is funded, um, would determine if we wanna kind of go on a route of repainting it next year, or tweaking some things, or if we want to, um, you know, if 9th Street is not feasible, maybe moving it to 10th, you know, we have, we have a lot of options. It's a pilot, we can always scrub it off too, and move things back, but, um, that would just be wear and tear normally until the next spring, cause this is an annual pavement marking project. It's just, we kinda slapped it in there, and we wanna try it out and see what people think, and, um, there's always opportunity to shift some things around, so.
That was, that answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Russell.
Kind of a related question. So if that, uh, pilot project would go, um, through the, the winter, how will you receive feedback? How will you know if it's successful? Will you actively reach out to people, or just see who, who contacts you, or how will we know?
Yeah. Um, a little mix of both, um, a little, everything both. Um, we are, we have worked with Dubuque Forward and Dubuque Main on kind of that, uh, citizen input for the people who were affected, um, with the parking restrictions and, and just the bike lanes in general on 9th and 10th. So they have been a great help, um, on coordinating some of those things. Uh, we would anticipate that partnership to work through the rest of the year with this. So we would also be taking calls, uh, we would also be looking at, um, we have cameras along 9th and 10th, thankfully. That would also be kind of putting that into consideration of usage as well, cause we haven't necessarily, we don't necessarily have the equipment to count bike traffic quite yet, um, so our cameras would, would be our best bet at that point.
I have kind of a, yeah, an extended question then. Um, one of the, um, business owners had a question about some of the parking spaces that we're taking, taking away.
Yeah.
Could you kind of, uh, refresh us as far as, um, how, how far is someone gonna have to walk now that we're taking this bike lane away? Sometimes people just wanna park right in front of the building, of course, um, but can you tell us how you've looked at that and how that might impact the business owners?
Yeah. Um, I know Steve Cook did, uh, write a letter saying specifically, I think he would be, uh, the most affected, uh, if, if we're kind of looking at that holistically. It would probably be, uh, half block would be the most, uh, because there would still be parking on White Street and Central. But there would be parking avail, and if, and I'm just going through the motions, if you're, if you're a biker going eastbound on 9th Street, um, you'd hit Bluff, then you hit Locust, um, there would still be parking on the north side of the street. So really, depending on where you're trying to go, if you're trying to go to Pickle Barrel, you would still be able to park right in front of Pickle Barrel, um, things like that. It, we did try to maneuver a way to have parking, um, you know, whatever was, whatever was feasible. Um, we also, I know Central and White was a, are two intersections that are very busy, and that's kind of on 9th Street where we tail off into a shared bike lane, so you're riding with traffic. I know for Mr. Cook, that was, um, a possibility to keep that parking in front of that business, but based on how many, uh, vehicles we have, uh, for volume, and then semis at that intersection, and the, the need for the turning there, um, and the protection that that bicyclist would need, we did have to remove that parking, but I would say half block, maybe one block, you would have to walk if, if you were, um, looking at getting, you know, right in front of someone's business, if the bike lane does prohibit you from parking there.
Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming that that's also some of the kinds of feedback that you'll be looking at.
Correct.
As the, as the pilot project goes forward.
Yes, and, um, I'm planning on having some coordination. I know, um, transit department, so Russ Steckline and, um, Ryan Nuckey are also kind of in those conversations, and we have a lot of studies going on, we have Central and White, we have our smart parking mobility management plan, we have connecting downtowns that, that is coming up, and there's just a lot of moving parts as well, but I think coordination and communication between multiple departments is what's going to be needed to make this successful, and I think it's very feasible to do that. So if somebody's complaining about parking and it goes over to Russ and Ryan, you know, it can come back over to engineering, and we can kind of tweak that and make any maneuvers that we need to.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this project very much. I think it's about time we start on, on doing more for bicyclists, uh, cause I, I hope we move this way in a very strong way in the next few years. So this is a start. The thing is, uh, the, so this is a good start, like I say. When we bring and say that here are some bike lanes, uh, we are telling people that we think this is a safe way to go. We're marking it, but we're also saying, this is the way to go, there's, you're gonna be safer on this route. Because I know someone who lives at my house who doesn't wanna go on the city streets because it's dangerous. Uh, and I like how you have the existing trail going to where it's going, and then we have the 8th and 9th, cause we, we, we start, you know, going down by the B branch, and then you come over, and then it just goes away. And I try, I wend my way through, through the downtown, trying to figure out the least way, you know, least dangerous way to go, whereas there's no traffic at the moment. So I'm, I'm glad that we have this. Uh, and now I notice where you stop, right at the hill. Okay, so, so it's something to think about, is first of all, when I'm going up the hill, I prefer 8th Street. I don't know about the mayor or anybody else, but it's just safer to me than we have at that university going, uh, going up. So I don't know, there's, that might be an easy connection to, to go. I see you have a share row going up there that we could take, and, and I go along Bluff quite a bit and go up Dodge Street, cause that's protected, and that's a great way to go. So I'm glad this is a start, and, um, let's think about how we get people up the hill too, um, because, I mean, a lot of people live up the hill. Yes, ma'am.
So if you look at that exhibit, and I'm, and I'm going off of memory, I apologize, um, but we've talked about it a lot. So we have that, if you are going westbound and you're on 10th, you would then turn left onto Main Street and get down to 8th and come back over. And, and then on the very east side, you have, um, you have over by the B branch, and you have that connection to, by the solar fields and things. We wanted to have this pilot be a part of a bigger picture, so that trail connection to the lower B branch, we want that connection towards the art museum, you know, there's, there's big things that are happening down there, Washington Park for Food Truck Fridays. Um, there's, um, also just Bluff Street in general, that is a very touristy neighborhood, the, the, um, the river people come over there as well. And also there is an opportunity, at least when I've biked to work, um, I, I live up on the hill, I live up on 5th, and I take the 4th Street elevator. So there's also an opportunity for that too. So we kinda wanted to get people back over in the Bluff 9th, 8th area, so you could possibly take 8th up the hill, or continue down Bluff and feel a little bit, um, going down into the, that touristy area. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Resnick.
Thanks. A lot of, a lot of, uh, uh, brain work has gone into this, and I, again, I appreciate the effort, uh, to get this going. It is gonna be difficult, and there'll be more difficult discussions ahead with, uh, with business people and other people about where we're gonna ask people to go biking, but I think it's, um, I think we have a, a lot we can do to help people, and I think we're just exploding with people who would love to get out on the bike.
Right.
Especially these days with a beautiful day and duck in there somewhere and safe from the rain, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
So this is a real narrow question, I guess, but, um, as it relates to this being a, um, pilot program, there was a request for consideration in the past that we rent spaces to a business owner, a property owner, uh, for a period of time, maybe at least during a pilot program. I wonder if, what the logistics of that are, I, I guess I just don't know enough about that idea and what we've done in the past.
And are you, are you referring to, like, renting a parking spot for that person? Um, I, I unfortunately am unknown as well. Um, I think that would be more of a, uh, transit question. I, I apologize for my, my answer, but, um, I know that we currently don't do that, we currently don't rent out, we can reserve, or we can have no parking bags over our meters and things like that, um, specifically because it is a metered spot. If it's not metered, you know, it's kind of a free for all. But that's as much as I'd like to speak on that, with my knowledge, so.
I don't know, Mike, if there's anything you could offer.
The, it really is a question for the Transportation Services Department, but Justine is right, we don't rent on-street spaces to individuals. That's, the idea behind having on-street spaces is they're, they're shared, and they're, you know, some people are there during the day, and some people are there at night, and some people are there to shop, and some people are there to go into their apartment, and go on and on, and so who do you rent it to? So we, we have plenty of rental spaces in our parking ramps and in our surface parking lots, and they're, quite frankly, mostly vacant. And so there's plenty of opportunities to, to rent and lease spaces, except in the Iowa Street ramp and the Locust Street ramp, which are both full, um, but they're also not really in proximity to this project.
Thank you. I really honestly didn't know if that was something we did in the past when we do a pilot, um, but certainly if it's not our standard of practice, then I can appreciate we, we wouldn't move forward with that, so, thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Obviously, there's been a great deal of work and thought put into all of this project, I appreciate that, and it's been a priority of ours for a long time to make Dubuque more walkable and bikeable and, and get aroundable. I agree with the, the business owner that he's gonna be mildly inconvenienced by this, but I can see the enormity of the greater good here in the improvements of safety for bicyclists and traffic in general, and the flow of people. So I'm hoping that, uh, I'm hoping that his situation turns out to be overstated. I don't think it's gonna impact the value of his property. It may expose more people to, to his frontage over the years by vehicles not being between the traffic and the front door, and it may not. But the greater good here is obviously served by trying this pilot project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Farber? Anything?
Uh, no, I agree with the comments, and, and I think, um, Mr. Jones said it succinctly, and, and I look forward to the project, and yet maybe because it is a pilot, we can hear from that property owner as to what, uh, the traffic was and what his concerns might be, um, and we can hear more about that after the pilot is completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Yeah, I, I generally tend to agree. I, I think, and Justine, I think you spoke to it really well, and when you said that there are a lot of moving parts right now, there are a lot of things that we're looking at, there are multiple plans that are sort of coming together at the same time in this area, which is actually very exciting, so that's a good thing. Um, and, and this is a pilot, and it is something that we'd like to look forward to. I personally hope it's something that becomes more than just a pilot, I kind of echo Mr. Resnick in that, in, um, being an avid biker myself, but, um, there's one thing we haven't talked about yet that concerns me about this, and it's one of the paragraphs in the memo, it says, "Based on alternate bid prices received for the project, will determine if there's sufficient funding in the pavement marking capital improvement to incorporate the bike lane pavement markings." Is there a chance that we don't get to do this? Mike shaking his head, yes, I'm just gonna give you a warning. Yeah.
Okay, I mean, there's always a chance, there's always a chance. Um, I, so the, the most expensive part of it is the color green, um, which is also symbolic of money, which is ironic to me. Um, so, um, the green portion of the bike lane is, um, when you're crossing, uh, you're not going straight through certain areas in an intersection, or you're crossing an alley, or, for example, when you're turning, um, you're taking that left turn off of 10th Street, and you're going down Main, there is a bike box that bikes are able to sit in, so that they basically orientate themselves, so that they can go straight, which is left. So that is just really where the price kind of hikes up. That is, that is my biggest concern, but the lines and re, and shifting those and repainting symbols and things, we do that every year. Not necessarily shifting it, but I think that paint will be the biggest portion. The, the lines and the symbols, those, those, you know, increase a little bit every year, but.
Got it.
I, I have a quote for it, and I don't think it's, I think we're gonna see a little bit higher, but I don't think it's gonna be where we're gonna have to scrap the whole thing.
Got it. So we can use some creativity from the sounds of it to be able to do some alternate marking if we can't, for instance, support the letter green with the amount in the budget.
Correct, and we've talked about some different green options that we've had, um, you know, colored concrete, or if we wanted to do some thermoplastic and kind of test that out as well, um, but the green paint that comes from, uh, the contractor, we might kind of sub that out and do something ourselves. For example, I don't know if you've been to Public Works, but the, that handicap blue, um, spot, that's kind of something, that's like colored concrete, that would be something that we could play with. But yeah, that's, that's my biggest concern, at least.
Got it. That's helpful. Good information. Thank you. Okay, well, good discussion. Thank you very much, Justine, for being here to answer questions. Um, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Seeing no further discussion needed. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Would welcome any public input this evening, if there is any. Seeing none here, do we have any virtual input?
No.
Okay.
No input.
All right, nothing from the city clerk's office? Okay, can move on to action items, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is adoption of Historic Millwork District Master Plan Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
I'll second. Motion by Resnick and a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of the attached resolution adopting the Historic Millwork District Master Plan Update. At the most recent work session on May 20th, 2024, Andrew Dresner from Bolton and Mink, Andrew Dresner from Bolton &amp; Mink, a consulting firm, presented a summary of progress and findings, in addition to submitting a final draft of the plan. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion this evening?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
Just a quick point of clarification. I had some communication from some folks who were upset that, hey, you're going to take away our parking? No, we're not. We're looking at a plan that that may do that. And if that happens, that will happen with conversation. It will happen incrementally. It'll happen with alternatives. But this action tonight is not removing a parking lot or doing any of that, as I understand it. This is saying here's a here's the next step in the plan. It's going to include a conversation about parking. Is that is that correct, Mike?
Yes, sir. There would be many steps left to eliminate that parking lot that you're referring to that's in the center of the Historic Millwork District. I would add just a little piece of information, as I mentioned earlier, about parking availability. We have several service parking lots in Historic Millwork District that I've never seen a car parked in. So there's still a lot of parking down there that needs to be used. But your point is well taken. This is not approval to remove that parking lot.
The the folks that I talk to, they each receive phone calls from a, I'll call him an activist. Do you see what they're doing now? Nobody's doing it. Take a breath. We're talking about how do we manage parking? How do we get people? How do we do a lot of things in the Historic Millwork District? They're all important. And they're all conversations we have to have. And they may include that parking lot that that you're concerned about. But nobody's saying we're going to sod over it tomorrow and 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 you're out of the conversation. Of course, you'll be in the conversation.
I apologize. I should add one other piece of information. This amended plan is not about that parking lot because that parking lot was never in the plan. It was just space that we used on a temporary basis for temporary parking while we were developing all the other parking. The original plan shows that as green space. And so it still shows it as green space.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Resnick, you're good?
Well, I am good, except to say I appreciate this relentless improvement we're doing down at the Millwork District. And most of you remember what was down there to start. And it just keeps getting better. And this is how it happens. It's always looking at things, looking at them again, five years later. How we is this better? Could we do something better than the plan? Well, we have revised this plan, and we're taking it forward. So I appreciate that constant looking at things and trying to make it better for our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I just want to add, I hear sometimes from people, why do we have so many plans? And why does it take so long to create plans and execute plans? But I think when it comes to the Millwork District, this is a great example of just a step forward. But when I look at the Millwork District, just from the time in which I have returned to Dubuque and where it is today, my goodness, it's something to be so proud of in our city. And so I think we have to take a step back. And I understand people's frustration when we create plans and there is money invested in plans. But I think being intentional with our movement and our investment is so important. And so I really appreciate all of the time and effort that has gone into this by staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wethel. Yeah, I would just echo pretty much that. You know, I think that we it's the intentional piece that you just pointed out. It's the fact that these plans allow us to be intentional about what we're going to do and make sure that as we move forward, we are asking the right questions and talking to the right people and being able to do things. And that's any plan that you read anywhere, like it says master plan is going to ask as many questions as it's going to give directions. That's part of the process. And one of the things I love about this one is it, you know, very specifically points out the need for public-private partnership to be able to get some of these things done. Nothing that has been done in the city of Dubuque has been done just solely with just city government or just private. It's always been a combination of those things when we talk about big areas like this. So I'm really happy with the way this plan has turned out after discussion over the last couple of years. I think it's really great direction. I think it asks some really good questions about what we really want there and green space included and parking included and all those different things. So I'm looking forward to the future of the Millwork District. It's still moving forward. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is request for City Council ratification of I U O E July 1, 2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Rousell, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Human Resources Officer Shelley Stickford is recommending City Council ratify a collective bargain agreement between the city of Dubuque and the International Union of Operating Engineers AFL-CIO Local 234, which will become effective July 1, 2024. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. Just want to say thank you to Shelley Stickford, Human Resources, and all the members of the International Union of Operating Engineers and AFL-CIO for the work on this collective bargaining agreement. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is resolutions of support for workforce housing tax credit applications.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the seven resolutions.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council approve the following resolutions to support for workforce housing tax credit applications to the Iowa Economic Development Department being submitted by the following. Millwork Flats LLC for redevelopment of property at 1065 Jackson Street. Wilson House Apartments LLC for redevelopment of property at 1243 Locust Street. JB Lofts LLC for development of property at 1301 Central Avenue. Corridor DBQ LLC for development of property at 1527 Central Avenue. Dubuque Initiatives for development of property at 1701 Central Avenue. Plastic Center Inc. for development of property at 401 West 5th Street. Miller Companies for development of property at the intersection of Flynn Hill Drive and Cross Hill Drive. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval. And I'll just add one comment that Economic Development Director Jill Connors made to me is this is the most applications we've ever had in one year for these credits for housing development.
Uh huh. Thanks, Mike. Discussion. Yeah, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
My point of just, I get why we do this. The Millwork Flats, though, we're approving a project. We're we just approved a public hearing on that. Are we able to approve support for something that we technically haven't approved yet?
Well, we'll find we'll find out when you vote tonight. If you vote to, you know, approve the letter of support, then it'll be submitted. But if you decide you don't want to do that, then it wouldn't be submitted.
Okay.
Well, and maybe another way to add on to that is that I think those two things are separate. We can choose to, I mean, we choose to support the letter of support for workforce housing tax credits separately from a development agreement. Is that another way of saying that, Mike?
That's a much better way to put it.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Any other discussion or questions? Mike, the point that you pointed out in Jill Jill Connors, Economic Development Director, the the most applications in a year ever, that's really exciting. And I was just looking at this and thinking about all these projects. And then, you know, one of the things on our consent agenda tonight was another updated version of all the the housing that we have approved and the housing that's in the pipeline for the community. And it is extremely exciting to see. So I want to say thank you to all the developers who are working towards each of these projects. And thank you for using the and trying to access the workforce housing tax credits. But I also want to say thank you to the Iowa Economic Development Authority, as well as the Iowa Legislature, for continuing to support the workforce housing tax credit. It's incredibly important for us in something like this and in moving these projects forward. So yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. I I'm glad you brought up what was on the consent agenda. And so somebody might question, well, why was that on the consent agenda this month, this meeting? It was on the last meeting, and the number is the same, over 2,300. The difference is, what we did is we actually went through and identified the ones that were affordable housing projects. And you can see that over 400 of the 2,300 are affordable housing projects. So we wanted to bring that point forward, which is why we attached it again to this meeting.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the exactly seven resolutions. Thank you for counting them up. Mr. Jones, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is recommendation to close 15th Street Railroad at grade crossing, Canadian Pacific Kansas City Limited Railroad request.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel, and Project Manager Steve Sampson Brown are recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving the permanent closure of the existing 15th Street Railroad at grade crossing and authorize the city manager to develop and execute an agreement with the Canadian Pacific Kansas City Limited Railroad and the Iowa Department of Transportation for said closure. After receiving a request from the Canadian Pacific and Kansas City Southern Railroad at the April 1 city council meeting, I made a recommendation to city council that the city consider closing the 15th Street Railroad crossing. On May 28, the city submitted a grant application with the US Department of Transportation Federal Railroad Administration for Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements, or CHRISI, grant to assist with funding for proposed safety, efficiency, and reliability improvements to at-grade railroad crossings within the city. The city is also examining the feasibility of creating a railroad railroad quiet zone in Dubuque. A quiet zone is where the trains are not required to blow their horns as they approach individual railroad at-grade crossings because the crossings have been upgraded with adequate warnings and barriers that motorists and pedestrians were adequately protected from attempting to cross the railroad tracks and therefore do not need the added warning of a train horn. If the city is successful in being awarded the CHRISI grant to propose supplemental safety measures that could be installed at all 11 railroad at-grade crossings in the downtown area, would allow the city to request the FRA establish a railroad quiet zone designation for Dubuque. As the city was developing plans to submit the application for the RACE Capital Implementation Grant, so this is different than the CHRISI grant, to assist with funding for proposed multimodal transportation corridor improvements to the Elm Street Corridor, the 16th Street Corridor, the Kerper Boulevard Corridor, the Chaplain Schmidt Island Corridor, and the proposed 14th Street Railroad vehicular and pedestrian overpass bridge project, the city collaborated with Canadian Pacific Kansas City Limited Railroad. During these discussions, the CPKC staff posed the question if the city would consider the permanent closure of the existing 15th Street Railroad at grade crossing. With the impending doubling in train traffic due to the merger of the Canadian Pacific and Kansas City Southern Railroads, CPKC has identified safety improvements that will need to be made at the 15th Street Crossing location if it is not closed. Closing the 15th Street Railroad Crossing would have a similar effect as investing in crossing improvements in that the trains do not need to blow their horns at a closed crossing. As part of the railroad's efforts to improve safety and reduce delays at railroad crossings, they will be implementing expensive technology improvements at each of the railroad crossings later this year. Therefore, they are asking the city to decide quickly so they can avoid making these technology improvements at the 15th Street Crossing. There is an additional at-grade rail crossing one block to the north at 16th Street and one block to the south at 14th Street. Just north of 16th Street, there is a pedestrian bike underpass which connects with Garfield Avenue. Traffic volume counts show that 300 cars per day use 15th Street, while 6,000 cars per day use 16th Street and 3,970 cars per day use 14th Street. The city has plans to complete major improvements to the 14th Street Crossing with the construction of a vehicle pedestrian bike overpass. This work is contingent on receiving a $25 million federal grant. Regardless of when this overpass is built, it is difficult to justify the continued existence of the 15th Street Crossing. The railroad is offering to pay the cost of closing of the 15th Street Crossing and to provide $100,000 to the city to help defray safety improvement costs at other crossings. To implement the quiet zone, the railroad will also support a grant application by the city to the Iowa Department of Transportation for a crossing closure incentive match payment of an additional $100,000 from the State of Iowa Section 130 Grant Program. In addition, it is the belief of the railroad that closing the 15th Street Crossing might reflect positively on the city's RACE grant application to build the 14th Street overpass. I believe that in furtherance of the city's effort to create a quiet zone designation and to end the noise burden of downtown residents, downtown businesses, and guests at locations such as nearby hotels who experience all the train horn noise 24 hours a day, it is appropriate to close the 15th Street Crossing. As directed by City Council, input from the public was solicited via 801 direct mailings to property owners and residents who live between Central Avenue and Sycamore Street and between 12th Street and 18th Street. The information letter on the closing of 15th Street offered people the opportunity to complete an online survey or to contact the engineering department staff as a way to provide feedback on the potential crossing crossing closure. To date, 50 people have taken the survey, and one person has called the engineering department. Nobody has expressed opposition to the closure. The response indicate a vast majority of people equally use 14th and 16th Streets predominantly and only use 15th Street as a third option. Engineering department staff has also hosted an open house on May 30 at the Old Engine House between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. as an additional opportunity for residents to provide input on the 15th Street closing. Four residents attended the meeting. Two attendees were residents from 14th Street and came to ask questions about the planned overpass. One attendee was a resident from Elm Street who did not see a problem with closing the crossing. And one attendee lives on Washington Street, advocated for slowing trains down through Dubuque to improve safety and suggested not closing the 15th Street Crossing until the 14th Street overpass bridge was constructed. Regarding the establishment of the quiet zone, input from the public was also solicited via social media postings distributed by the Public Information Office. The social media postings offered anyone living or working near the railroad tracks the opportunity to provide feedback via a short online survey. As summary of the final quiet zone survey results is as follows. There were 479 responses. People who live or work within the city limits were 97%. People who live or work near the railroad tracks were 75%. The years living or working near the railroad tracks, more than four years, were 43%. Does the train noise bother you? 73% yes. Has train noise ever negatively impacted your quality of life? 67% yes. You believe train noise can devalue a home or property? 85% yes. You support creating quiet zones in the city of Dubuque? 87.7% yes. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I really appreciate the data-driven approach of collecting information from our communities, specifically those people who are most affected. My, some time ago, when we started this conversation, I just planned to frequent down that way more often. And my impression was, gosh, it doesn't really seem as busy on on this street compared to the other areas. And I we don't go on a hunch. That's what I appreciate about our data-driven ways that we collect information to make these decisions. And so I just really appreciate staff's time and energy put into that process.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Yeah, I think what excites me most about this possibility is that we really are starting to look at a real future where we could we could have a quiet zone as a reality. I mean, it's something that we're really moving towards. And that's I don't think everybody was there four or five years ago. It was a much bigger lift. But this, we've taken a lot of steps towards moving in that direction. And I just have to say, I'm extremely grateful to the the railroad, to the CPKC railroad. You know, they've been they've been good partners in this process. We've built a good relationship with them as we've had to go through the the process of working with the B Branch, as you mentioned earlier. working with the B Branch, as you mentioned earlier. And, you know, for all the challenges that come with having to work with something as large as a railroad that has to move a lot of things through, and knowing that there are challenges coming with much longer trains that are going to be taking up a lot more time and just coming through a lot more often, I'm really happy to see us moving in this direction. So I think this is a great first step towards that process. Another great second step is going to be when we get that RISE grant, because we all know that we're working really hard to make sure that that RISE grant happens, and I appreciate all the work that's been going into this. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is recommendation for replacement agenda and meeting management system.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive, file, and approve.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrian, I'm coming to you for this one, right?
Yes, thank you. Adrian Brightfelder, city clerk. So the request before city council is for Civic Plus's Agenda and Meeting Management Select, which is known as SELECT for short, to replace our current agenda software, Novus Agenda. So just a little background that I'll summarize from my memo. Novus Agenda has digitally managed and published the city council's agenda since 2011. Granicus acquired Novus Agenda in 2017 and intends to discontinue Novus Agenda by September 2025 due to developing its own in-house agenda software. So city staff issued a request for proposals for a replacement agenda meeting management system in February. We received five proposals by the March 7 deadline. Three vendors were selected for software demonstrations which occurred in April. So after compiling committee evaluation scores for both the proposals and the software demonstrations, Civic Plus was determined to be the first-rate vendor. Where I feel it mainly stood out is being a very highly configurable solution, really gives a lot of administrator access to agenda modification as well as a lot of collaboration tools for city staff, which I think will really help with improving efficiencies and communications and building the agenda. It also appears to have a very modern interface, and so I think that'll be very appealing for both the city council as well as the public. It also met all of our requirements in terms of customer service support as well as data security. Civic Plus as a company was founded in 1998, and it has served as the city's website, design, and support vendor since 2008. If it is approved as our replacement vendor, the transition is estimated to take 20 to 24 weeks. So I would say, worst-case scenario, by 2025, we would fully transition to Civic Plus as the new platform. We do intend to keep Novus Agenda active until SELECT is fully operational, and we confirm that it is working successfully. The specific transition timeline with key milestone dates will be communicated to the city council and city staff once that's finalized. As part of that, we do intend to have training sessions for city council and staff. And additionally, I do intend to request a work session in order to demonstrate the system's functionality to both city council and the public. We also will publish resources on the platform, on the city's website, to also help the public with transitioning to the new platform. And while it will be a transition, the one thing I think is important to emphasize for both city council and city staff is there really aren't going to be a lot of major changes in how you view the agenda and attachments. We've always, since 2011, had them digitally managed and published, and that's a system that has worked successfully. And so with transitioning to a new platform, the core functions and how they do that really isn't going to change in terms of how you access the agenda. We just hope that there will be some minor enhancements that will be welcomed by both the public, city staff, and city council as part of this transition. So that's pretty much what I will summarize, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I'll jump in first here. You know, change is hard. We're all going to go through it. But if you're worried about it, you can stop right now. And here's the reason why. I've been so impressed by this entire process, especially Adrian's organization of it and putting it together. I mean, the step-by-step process of looking very carefully at the details of what goes into this agenda software has been, has just absolutely been top-notch every step of the way. So thank you, Adrian, for all your work on it. And thank you to everybody who was on the RFP committee, too. I learned a lot in this process. I really don't have a sense of what the front end of our agenda software now really looks like and what staff has to deal with. I just know what we all look at and what the public looks at. So I learned a lot about the necessity for some of these features that really bubbled up to the top as being the ones that were most important. So I appreciated that very much. And Adrian's right. You know, the interface that we're all going to work with as we go through this will change a little bit. It'll be different. We'll be used to it very quickly, especially through the training. And I think the public will be very used to it, too. It's a necessary change. It's something that we're going to have to go through either way, but the way we took this on and looked very carefully at all the details was very, very effective. So I'm highly confident in the process and highly confident in the product going forward. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Well, thanks again, Adrian, and thank you for everyone on that process. Motion here, receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is work session request, Chaplain Schmidt Island redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file, and I want to talk about this a little bit before we solidify a date.
Okay, okay. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Mr. Jones, straight to you.
It dawned on me that there's an opportunity here. I was going to do this in council member reports. Last week, we had a DRA meeting, and that was in the newly remodeled and renovated showroom inside the newly renovated casino, and it had a lot of pop and a lot of wow to it. And I wonder if we could, instead of setting this work session in this room ahead of a council meeting, if we could back up to like 4:00 and do it there, so that you'd all get a peek at that and talk about Schmidt Island at Schmidt Island for an evening. So that's, that was my odd thought, that I didn't want to set the date and time in the motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Jones.
We're about six weeks out. We've got plenty of time.
Sure.
That's what this.
It's an interesting thought. I have a couple of immediate concerns, not to just, you know, go down on the idea right away, but the, I mean, we have several of us at work that I think it might be difficult at 4:00 in the afternoon to do that. The second thing would be, I like the idea that we can be in this room and have everything recorded that we're saying, that we can then make sure that the public sees in a way that we can't do at, I just don't even think it would be possible down at Schmidt Island to be able to do that. I am also highly confident in the DRA's ability to be able to show the community what that's really going to look like. I like the idea, but I personally, I wonder if it would be more effective to be able to have that discussion here where everybody can see it and have it as publicly accessible as possible. But welcome to have the discussion. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, that's fair enough. I'd like to modify my motion to receive and file the documents and set the work session for Monday, July 15th at 5:30 in these chambers.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick there. Any further discussion on it? And I do appreciate the idea, though. It's good to think outside the box every once in a while. Okay. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is work session request for Mounds Foundation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and set the work session for Monday, August 5th at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Right before a council meeting, so I'm assuming it works for all. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Delivering Dubuque Video Housing and Community Development.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and watch the video.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Sell, second by Jones. Eric, we can go ahead and roll the video, please.
Access to safe, affordable, and quality neighborhoods is essential. The Dubuque's commitment to being a great place for everyone to live. In this episode of Delivering Dubuque, we'll explore how the city's Housing and Community Development Department is supporting these efforts through programs, services, and initiatives that benefit our entire community.
I mean, it really feels like a home, you know? I mean, it's just, it's a place where students have come in and it's ready to be lived in right now.
So we're here today with Alexis Steger, the Housing and Community Development Director. So Alexis, welcome. Thanks for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
You know, when I was first on the Housing Commission, the first thing that struck me was just how much the Housing and Community Development Department does in the city Dubuque. Maybe we could break it down a little bit and talk about each of those specifically and dig into them a little bit more. So let's start with the rental assistance and housing assistance in general. So maybe talk about some of the programs that we offer here in the city.
Sure. So we have Housing Choice vouchers, which is assistance that the tenant can pick where they want to live. The landlord does have to accept that voucher, but once they do, they can move into a unit, and the city gets federal funding to help pay for the rent of that unit. The participant still has to pay up to 30% of their income, and so they are contributing to that rent as well. And we also have VASH, which is for homeless veterans. And then we also have the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. Once you hold a Housing Choice voucher and you're working, you can start making more. And instead of having to contribute more, we actually take that and set it aside. And if you're starting to meet some five-year goals, then at the end of that five years, you actually have an account that you can utilize. You can actually use your voucher to purchase a home, and it will help you pay your mortgage. And then additional services are offered in those programs to help people become a little more self-sufficient or whatever other needs are identified.
So when we talk about all these programs, they clearly have impacts on people individually, and they have impacts on families. But there's a major economic impact for an entire community to have services like this, too.
We serve about 900 families in this, and what that equates to is $7 million into our economy. $2 million of that's provided by participants, and that's their rent, but $5 million is also coming from the federal government to help with subsidy. So $7 million brought into the city of Dubuque under this program.
Wow. I mean, that's a major impact. It's really more of an investment in the community in many ways, isn't it?
It's an extreme investment, and as we see participants start paying more, we're able to help more. So it doesn't ever really decrease.
You know, this kind of gets us into the community services portion. What are some of the community development pieces of what you do?
It kind of goes through the whole gamut. We redoing all of Comiskey Park and Avon Park, things like accessibility for elevators at old buildings. We provide food access through a hydroponics program. We also provide down payment assistance, up to $25,000 to help homebuyers. One of the biggest barriers to getting a home and building that generational wealth right now is credit. So we also have programs to help people repair their credit. But we also have rehab for homeowners. We can provide a loan at a much smaller amount than if they were to go to a bank. So lots and lots of things that we continue to do throughout the community that maybe people don't realize the housing department is behind and that the community funding is there.
It's not just about getting the assistance that people need on a monthly basis, but also building towards being able to have things like homeownership and more stability. So we work with partners to rehabilitate homes and provide those to homebuyers. We're actually sitting in one of those homes right now that we worked with a partner in the community to do that. So tell us a little bit more about that one.
We'll take homes to rehabilitate, and so we actually purchase homes that might be a little bit dilapidated or a family is willing to sell and rehab it like this. But the city doesn't actually do the rehab. We're not a construction company for housing. So we actually leverage partnerships. In this home, we worked with ONI, Affordable Housing Network Incorporated, and they're a nonprofit that comes in to help with this type of renovation. And so this amazing house actually was completed by them, and then we will help resell it for an affordable price. Affordable must mean that people who make 80% or less of their remaining income qualify to buy this home, and that they won't spend more than 30% of their income maintaining the home. So we have several homes that we're working on with different partners.
The spaces that you're creating with that are amazing. I mean, this is a really nice place for a homebuyer to be able to come and live. And, you know, a lot of these are very close to schools and in really great locations, too.
You get to see the neighborhood change significantly. The feel of safety as well as the value of the homes get to be maintained when we do these rehabs.
Yeah. And it really contributes that community pride, too, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah. So this is a good opportunity to transition to another program that you offer, and that's Building Inspection and Construction Services. So one of the things I've noticed about the challenges with construction services, the fact that we kind of have a fine line to walk when it comes to regulation versus safety and all these different things. And it involves a lot of different departments across the city and across the state, too, doesn't it?
Yes. So we get the minimum building guide from the state, but we work with planning. They do all the reviews before we get to it for zoning, fire, all the fire safety. So all those codes work together, and other departments help us do that. So we complete about 2,000 inspections every single year and sometimes more for our 10,000 rental units that we have in Dubuque. So often, we are seeing just small things. But sometimes you see the bigger stuff, and so we're in to make sure those get fixed and advocate for tenants to get them fixed as well. Then on the building side, we also permit any of the work that's being done to make sure it meets building code. If you're going to rehab or build something new, anywhere from a new residential home to our retail or a big mall or anything that goes up, we want to make sure it's built well. And so city passes building codes, and we make sure that people are building to those codes to make sure it's safe. Community safety, making sure that we have buildings that are going to hold up over the years as well as be a home for somebody.
So another aspect of safety in the community is also home modification.
Yeah, we have adult home modification program to help people try to stay in their home as they age. Things like small thresholds can trip some of the elderly, making sure that electrical is accessible and higher, so they don't have to bend down. Some of those things that are small but can help people age in their home instead of having to sell and move out. And then we also have the Healthy Homes program, and we also have the lead in Healthy Homes program. We have a variety of programs that kind of meet people where they're at and what their needs are to modify their homes in a way that can help them in the future.
Help you with sidewalks, make it smoother, make all that.
So many different ways to meet people where they are with the programs that we have. You know, speaking of meeting people where they are, one of the challenges that we're seeing across the United States right now is an increase in homelessness. And we've experienced some of that here in Dubuque, too. And I know that some of the challenges that we've faced, we've worked with partners to try and address those. So talk a little bit more about what we do when we see somebody who's facing homelessness and how we can help them.
There's a lot of needs that come with homelessness. And we do work with a lot of partners in this area. Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa is one. So with our partners, we, the city contributes to a homeless hotline so that people can call to get the services that they need if they're going to be homeless. We also have rapid rehousing for those that fear they might be losing their home as opposed to already being homeless. And we also help rehabilitate shelters. Sometimes there's infrastructure needs that we help with. People think of shelter as the only solution to homelessness. However, it's only one solution that we have in Dubuque. We just received some new type of funding that helps us pay for rental deposits for those that have been homeless, so that they can actually get into that permanent home. Rental deposits are one of those barriers that stop people from getting into the permanent home.
When it comes to homelessness and challenges like that, there are a lot of different factors that come in that can really be complicated in a person's life. And I think it's great that we focus on all those different areas and do that with housing as the goal. Having you here today is so important to be able to talk about this. I mean, when we talk about Delivering Dubuque, we're talking about all the ways that things happen within the city, but then also with the partnerships that we have. And I don't think anybody really embodies that better than the Housing and Community Development Department because of all the ways in which you work throughout the community. Well, thank you so much, Alexis, for being here to tell us everything about the Housing and Community Development Department today.
Thanks for having me.
Well, I want to make sure I thank Alexis, and then also thank Felicia Carner and Eric Mohler for the editing process of trying to put all that together. That, you know, we talk about it every time that there's a budget hearing for Housing and Community Development and just how much they do, but it was amazing to see it in video form and all the ways in which they're working in the community. So thanks to everybody for being involved in that and telling more of the story. Motion here is to receive and file, watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
Mr. Mayor.
What do we have, Mr. Sprank?
Well, there was a party Saturday for the neighborhood, for the LGBTQ plus community. So I wanted to thank everyone that came down from the city staff as well as my cohorts on council that were able to stop down. It was a little rainy day, but we still had over 1,000 people show up for an event that we thought, well, we didn't even know it was going to happen that day. So as much rain as we got. So just want to say thank you for everybody that came. Thank you.
Danny, I got to tell you, the work that you do on this every single year, it's incredible. 1,000 people showed up in the rain. all the volunteers together, but I mean, the organization of it, it, it's incredible. So thank you very much for doing it, because it's a really important day for us as a community to be able to celebrate each other in that way, and, and what you put together to give people a platform to do that. I'm very thankful to live in a community that so many people want to show up and support in that way, but I'm really thankful to have somebody like you who makes that possible. So thank you for doing it.
I'm just part of it. I'm not the, I'm not the spokesperson, I'm just part of it, so.
I know.
That's how, but.
But you're a pretty important part of it, and you're sitting right here, so I want to make sure.
[laughing]
Others? Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. Well, I know it was a really busy weekend, and my colleagues were all over the place, and I had the honor of, of representing the city at the Marshallese Constitution Day, and it was a wonderful celebration with speakers, dancing, food, and just a, a celebration of the fact that we have one of the largest Marshallese communities in the Midwest. And sometimes I think we, we don't take advantage of the cultural diversity that's in our community. So I was so happy and honored to be part of that. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Rousell. Thanks for representing us there. Ms. Wethel.
Well, for Mr. Sprank, I do want to commend you again. I, what a beautiful day, and I went down with my teenage daughters, and my daughter said, "Well, last year, it was so hot, and this year, it rained a lot, so next year's going to be perfect weather." So I just want you to know, that's my 14-year-old's prediction. But in all truthfulness, to see their friends, who are members of the LGBTQ+ community, and them to be able to be there to celebrate with them, to create that acceptance in our city for our youth, it truly was a family celebration, so thank you. I do want to remind everybody, it brings to mind, because I walked my 17-year-old, who will be 18 by the general election, down to the elections office on Saturday, and we voted. She voted for the first time. It was pretty exciting for me, and monumental, and I cried. I'll be totally honest, it was an amazing day. But I do want to remind everybody that tomorrow is our election, and it's important to have your voice be heard, and so please consider and make a plan for your voting tomorrow if you haven't already.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. So this morning, I had an hour conversation with Lyle Summick, and I just want to let the citizens know that goal-setting starts now, and some of you have already, you know, it's already started. But it's great to talk for an hour about the citizens and the city of Dubuque, and how we can better our infrastructure, and how we work with each other, and so many other topics. It's, it's one of the reasons that all of us go into community service, is to really explore the possibilities. What is best for our citizens after we listen to them, after we get, we read a lot, and then we have challenges. And I always, as I said to, to Lyle today, that solutions begin with hard conversations. And we, and we need to keep having those hard conversations and in-depth, caring conversations, which, again, just to let the citizens know, we've begun this, it's very important. He said that he's had some great conversations with my colleagues as well already. So it gets me excited about something that's not going to happen for months, getting me primed, and really getting ready to talk with you all about what we can do to help our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Resnick. Ms. Farber, did you have anything before I move on?
Thank you. I was honored to attend the first FCC Advisory Committee meeting last week, and I have volunteered to be the ongoing recorder for the organization. So that's kind of fun, because, you know, it's always fun to be the one that shares a summary document with the other attendees to give some guidance and some outline for what had occurred during the meetings. So I look forward, these are quarterly meetings, and I look forward to going out to Washington, actually, in September for our first face-to-face meeting with the commissioners themselves. So it was, again, an honor and always a pleasure to represent Dubuque.
Well, thank you so much for your service. Well, I just have two quick things. One, I had the opportunity this afternoon, right before it really started raining, to go to Liberty Recovery Center down on the corner there of Jackson and White. And I haven't, or Jackson and 22nd, I should say, and I hadn't been there for a couple of years since they opened. They're doing some pretty incredible work, so I believe they're reaching out to us as council members. Be, I'd encourage you to have a conversation with them, just to see what's going on down there. I think it's definitely something that's really important to our community, and I met some great people who told some very inspiring stories about the work that they're doing in their own lives there. And then the only other thing I have is that I missed my very first city council meeting ever, last time you all got together, and apparently just got right through a meeting in about an hour's time. So maybe I'll miss more in the future for your sake, but the reason I missed it is I was attending the American Flood Coalition Summit in Washington, DC. It's, it's a group that I had not been involved with, Dubuque has not been involved with. The state of Iowa is just now becoming involved, and there were several Iowa mayors there, including Jeff Jock from Dyersville, and Brad Bark from Muscatine, Quentin Hart from Waterloo, and Tiffany O'Donnell, I believe, from Cedar Rapids. And the reason we were there is to talk about flooding, which is interesting today. As we, you know, when I was driving back from Liberty today, I saw rain in places and puddling in places that I hadn't seen in a very long time. That's how much rain we received. I think it's less about the fact that we haven't done enough work, because I think we've done a ton of work, but I think the point is that we are still going to be facing a climate that is changing to the point where we are going to see these storms. It's going to sit right over top of us, and it's just going to dump. And the stories that you hear, the, the ways that we are connected in Iowa with the other states that were there, Florida, Texas, there were some, West Virginia was there, there were several different states that are all dealing with these changes in different ways, but we need to, to come together like this to be able to talk about what do we need from our federal government partners to be able to make the changes that we need here and be as resilient as we need to be. So these kinds of things like we saw today don't happen anymore, and, and things that are even far worse. So it was a very good meeting, and I think it was very effective. I had an opportunity to speak with both of our, both of our senators and Representative Hinson as well, so it's always good to, to be there and talk about these things, and we have some, some good partners in the work that we need to do. Okay, we have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move the council going to closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and possible sale of real estate.
Second by.
Yeah, we do. [laughing].
Full motion there, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Karen O'Bramwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.